On April 23rd, 2024, Shasta County Sheriff Mike Johnson gave a presentation to the Board of Supervisors on the problem at our southern border and how it is affecting us here in Shasta County. I feel this presentation by Sheriff Mike Johnson was fact-filled. You tell me what you think in the comments below. Here it is. Let's jump right in.
Moving on to R3. Receive a presentation from the Sheriff's Office regarding border control and adopted resolution regarding response and services to the abandonment of asylum seekers and non-citizen migrants to Shasta County. This was sponsored by myself. I will give you a little bit of a very, very brief update as before I turn it over to Sheriff Johnson. This is something that I had discussed back after understanding and hearing about Sheriff Johnson's trip to the border. It's something that I've worked on for a couple of months. The irony that this fell on the same day as that we recognized Jerry and Skippy, I think is perfect because the reality is here in Shasta County, we have a lot of individuals that need help and there are many of us helping those individuals. I think the least compassionate thing we could do is send any kind of message out that we can take and facilitate more individuals because the resources we have are extremely limited and we are not equipped to help individuals. So I think the most compassionate thing we could do is find an avenue to get those individuals to a place where they can get help because if you think that we have people sleeping on the streets now, based on my conversation with Sheriff Johnson and other things that I'm aware of that are happening in other counties that are farther to the south and as that moves forward, that number will double, triple, and 10x if we're not prepared. So this is the most compassionate thing is making sure people can have help. So I sponsored this, worked with Sheriff Johnson. Sheriff, thank you for coming. It's all yours.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Supervisors, I want to start out by just saying that key word in this presentation is illegal, illegal immigration. I'm not referring to folks that are coming into our country legally and seeking asylum through the process that we have established. So through that, what happened was is in November of 2023, I had the opportunity to attend a three-day training on the border and everything I talk about here today is specific to that particular border. I am just talking about the San Diego, San Ysidro, Tijuana region there. There's another region of California which is a primary immigration route, which is Imperial Valley. I did not go there. I'm not talking about Arizona. I'm not talking about New Mexico. I'm not talking about Texas. I am specific to that border. So there's a couple of things that we're going to cover and I truncated this down really brief, Supervisors, in the interest of time here. The border crisis and illegal immigration, the threat to America and Shasta County, and there is a real threat with the open borders that are going on, and finally, the sustainable resources that we have here in our county to offer citizens of this county. So with that, this is a link. All this information is on our website in a little bit more detail. I prepared a three-page summary basically of that trip. So just for everybody's orientation on how this worked, we went down there the first two days really were meeting with all the federal agencies, San Diego Sheriff's Office, all the task forces that are involved with the border. And then the third day, I actually worked the border half a day along the wall and a half a day at San Ysidro Point of Entry. So just so you know, this is the border of the United States with Mexico is a total of 1,954 miles of border. If you're looking at just us right in this region here of California, that is approximately 140 miles of border. There's about roughly 50 miles of the wall that President Trump had started when he was in office that has been completed. And as we talk about that wall and how this related to my visit, I want you to understand the wall is not a solid wall that spans across the border. It has gaps and broken and incomplete in various regions and that's how people are able to get through. So as the first day, there were so many different agencies that came in and are involved with the border and the open border and what's going on. It was overwhelming. I list a few of the significant ones here and I can tell you the impacts are great, especially to the San Diego Sheriff's Office who has to mitigate all the influx of crime and search and rescue operations and cartel involvement coming across the border on both sides. It's just phenomenal and there's some key takeaways out of that that I want to start off with. So if you look at this and folks, this is not me making this up based on my political views about my position in law enforcement. This is facts that were given to me by the Border Patrol Chief that I rode with during this whole event. These are facts where I actually witnessed this and saw what was going on. I talked to the people involved. It's not about what I've seen on CNN or the national media or anything else. This is me going there. The first one, the border policies and protection of the state literally changed, and this is their words, literally changed the day that Biden took office into an open border policy where they had hands off and could no longer control folks coming across our border. There is no mechanism in place, excuse me, to send illegal immigrants back to their country of origin. That is another change that has been pretty profound. The cartels, primarily Sinaloa Cartel, Cartel Jalisco Nuueva Generación, known as CNG, and the Ariano Felix Organization, AFO, engage daily in human trafficking, drug smuggling, prostitution, both in Tijuana and the greater San Diego region. And as we were driving along this border and this wall, which I'll show you in a minute in a mock-up, the chief was pointing out the buildings in Tijuana right across the border of which cartels were involved with which buildings and what they were involved in. For example, he'd say, that's a Sinaloa cartel and that building's for human trafficking. He'd say, that's AFO cartel and they're involved in drug smuggling. They know everything that's going on. It's really sickening and really profound to see the impacts that that, just that little place of the border is having on our state and our nation. Tijuana, since the open border policy, has now a staggering, just Tijuana, the city, 2,000 homicides a year, 2,000 homicides a year, mostly cartel-related and mostly related to drug smuggling and human trafficking. On that border, in 2022, 1.8 million pounds of narcotics were seized, 14,700 pounds of fentanyl. I could tell you those numbers have almost tripled and quadrupled since then. There's maritime resources and air operations going on on a daily basis, all at the expense of the U.S. for people getting stranded out there or needing rescue services and we're paying for all of that. The intel, here's what's working good. This is a very positive part that's working on the border. The intelligence and the cooperation between all those agencies that I had listed up there, both local and federal, they are doing a great job in identifying known terrorists trying to make their way in through that border. Now, the caveat to that is this known terrorist. They have to have a profile on these terrorists. They have to know who they are and have some sort of background on them. There's facial recognition, there's fingerprint, fingerprints, there's all kinds of sorts of screening that's going on and they're doing good with that part. The U.S. Border Patrol told me that they feel that the wall can be very effective in helping mitigate a lot of what's going on if it's completed and if the policies are changed. And you can see the last stat there is that the U.S. agencies submit roughly 6,124,000 cases annually from border-related activity. So again, this is what we're talking about. The San Ysidro Point of Entry is right in here. The region that I worked was right in here and have information on and I'm going to show you a kind of a visual mock-up of what I learned about this. So if you look at that, that's our wall along the border. Now, again, it's not complete, it's not without gaps. There's gaps within the ravines and the canyons and stuff and people are able to get through it, but it's, so far, it's pretty impressive. Mexico also has a wall on their side on Tijuana right there and their wall is even less secure and more gaps and incomplete, but it is a wall. That area in between the two in here is what I call no man's land and that's just a term I gave it. That's the area that our Border Patrol works. It's about 100 yards in length across and it's just desolate weeds and like a dry river that was going through their area and there's nothing in there. It's the area people traverse when they're trying to come into our country through Tijuana and through Mexico. That's where that no man's land was patrolled. So here's a daily, multiple times a day occurrence that goes on. Countries know we have an open border, so they're flying one-way flights into Tijuana full of immigrants coming into our country. Once that plane lands, those people make their way across the border. They come through the Mexico wall and they get up to our wall. Now, folks, these are not, despite the narratives you may hear, these are not refugees that have been seeking asylum because they're fleeing their fascist government. These are people coming here because we have opened the border and they're coming without any repercussion. And if you don't think that there are terrorist organizations that are sending people in here and setting up cells that hate America and are going to do us harm, then you're ignorant. I'm telling you, it's happening. I'm watching it. So here's what happens next. The ones that make it to our wall, and I say that because when a plane lands and there's a couple hundred people getting off, the cartels start to pick off women and children so they can sex traffic, drug, work in their drug labs, everything you can imagine. So the ones that actually make it to the wall are largely middle-aged males. We call military-aged males that make it to the wall, but there are some women and children that make it, just not very many relatively in comparison to the group. So the group gets to the wall. They don't even try to come in past that wall because we are enabling them. From there, this is what happens. There's where they're trying to get. In Chula Vista, pitcher, the size of Costco, there's three canvas tents set up in Chula Vista. This is called the processing center. This is where these people are headed to get processed to come into the United States. So the reason they don't leave is because we make it easy for them. They set up basically a transient camp along our wall. We take, oops, we have buses, Greyhound-style buses at the processing center. We come in between the no man's land, we come over here, pick up these groups of people and we bring them back to the processing center. Takes 52 hours roughly to process an immigrant coming into our country. In that processing center, we have food, we have medical, we have blankets, we have clothing, we have everything for them and they're all screened and run through that process. The other thing I'd like to tell you about these groups of people that are coming in, and again, I witness this firsthand, I talk to these people, these people are dressed like you and I. They have iPhones, they have brand-new backpacks, they have Nike shoes, they are not refugees. They are coming into this country like that. So at the processing center, they go through this. Now, here's the other thing. These illegal immigrants do not have to have any sort of ID, no proof of who they are, nothing. We process them for what they say. So if I say my name is Joe Blow and I don't have any ID, they fingerprint me, they photograph me, they say, where are you going? I say, well, I'm headed to Chicago and they say, okay, it ought to take you seven days to get to Chicago. Here's the name of the ICE agent in Chicago. When you get there, contact him. He'll set you up with the United States ID, a work permit, and subsidies to help you get established. And the final thing they give them is a citation for illegal immigration. And that citation and court date is five to seven years out from when they have to appear in court for their illegal, folks, illegal seque immigration into our country. After they're processed, they're sent out wherever they're going. That's how many per day are coming just out of that Chula Vista processing center. 1,000 immigrants per day. Now, here's the thing about that. Don't think that this is intended or aimed at any one particular culture, race, or group. We have 60 different countries represented every day coming through that processing center, coming into our country. 60 different countries every day, 120 different dialects. And the reason I tell you that is because the Border Patrol and the resources that are working there have to mitigate that and have to get translators to deal with all these people. It costs the United States $3 million a month to run the processing center and that does not include the salaries of all the people that are in there working that, running that processing center. So of those immigrants and those 60 different countries, only about 2% to 4% maybe are Mexican national. There are all other countries being represented here. So once they go out, again, so if you put this in terms and try a little basic math about it, in roughly three months, the population of Redding has come into the United States illegally through this processing center. Now, you times that by however many months we've been going with this program and the numbers are staggering. And again, folks, this is only right there at Chula Vista, San Ysidro Point of Entry. This is not anywhere else. Highlights of that again, 1,000 immigrants per day, only 2% to 4% are illegal immigrants are of Mexican national descent, 60 different countries, one-way flights into Tijuana to come across our border, 160 different dialects, $3 million a month to operate the Chula Vista processing center. Here's what I didn't tell you, I forgot to tell you in that, when I told you that if I'm an immigrant and I said my name is Joe Blow and they fingerprint me and I tell them where I'm going, I say Chicago, they'll say, my question to them was, well, who's paying for all that? How are they getting from here to Chicago and coming in? So the transportation within the United States, they, not so much, but getting there and getting to the processing center, most of these, probably 90% is the estimation I was given, of these immigrants coming in are sponsored by NGOs. And an NGO is a non-governmental organization. So my question was, so you're talking about a 501(c)(3) or a church or something of that nature? And they said similar and I'm not exactly clear on what that means, but my next question was, is who funds it? And who's funding the NGOs is our federal government. So our government is funding the NGOs who are sponsoring the illegals coming into our country. It makes absolutely no sense to me, super frustrating, I don't understand it. Last thing is open-air detention centers, as you may see on national media, they talk about this inhumane treatment, open-air centers, that's not a thing. What that is, is when they come across in those groups that I showed you to the wall, they're coming in groups of 30 to 200 people at a time and they set up those transient camps and wait for us to come and get them and process them. We don't have a way, we get overwhelmed across that almost 2,000 miles of border and sometimes they have to wait there until we can get enough buses and resources and get them in. So that is a farce as well. Now, I'd like to talk to you real briefly, real briefly about San Ysidro Point of Entry. This is where, this is where actual legal immigration takes place, whether it's on a daily basis or permanent. It is the busiest point of entry in the entire world and it is crazy and staggering the amount of foot traffic and vehicle traffic that come through here. During that time, I only worked half a day at the San Ysidro Point of Entry. They said they pick off at least two load cars a day of drugs. A load car is a car, truck, or vehicle that has hidden compartments that they've loaded up with illegal narcotics that come across the border. So when I was there, we picked off a little Toyota truck and it had 16 pounds of fentanyl and four pounds of cocaine in it. And the warehouse and all the drugs that are there are just amazing. And they told me that's just a drop in the bucket of what actually comes through. Interestingly enough, the majority of the smuggling, at least coming by vehicle, is done by United States citizens that reside in Baja in Tijuana, Mexico. What the cartel does is approach them and say, we'll give you a handsome sum of cash, whatever that is, 10 grand, to take this vehicle and park it here, no questions asked. And people are doing it because it's large amounts of money and it's worth it to them, the risk, I guess, especially if they're juveniles because there's no real consequences for the juveniles. The other thing that's happening is some of these United States citizens or even Mexican nationals that come across the border to work every day, the cartel will run surveillance on them where they're, where they live in Mexico. They'll load up their cars with drugs, not even tell them. They'll watch the car come across the border and park and they go off to their job and then they'll go take their dope off of their car. And the reason we know this is because some of those cars are getting picked off and people unsuspectingly come across the border. Supervisor Kelstrom, I'm using for examples, he lives in Baja, Mexico. He's an honest citizen, he's just coming across the border to work. The dog sniffs his cars, he's coming across, they pull him over, they pull off pounds of illicit drugs from his car. He doesn't know anything about it and we can usually get through that pretty simply by interviews and interrogation and determine that he didn't know what was going on. My point in telling you all of that is most of those drugs coming across now are fentanyl and fentanyl is an epidemic in this country and kills a lot of innocent people and young people who overdose by chance and it's coming up our I-5 corridor on a regular basis. We have picked off loads as the drug task force. We have picked off loads driven by illegal immigrants. It's here and it's a problem and that border is a big, big part of that problem. Just a few takeaways from that. SYPOE is San Ysidro Point of Entry, busiest port in the world. The precursors for fentanyl come from primarily China and some from the Middle East into Mexico, into the Tijuana specialty region. That's where they process and make fentanyl and then they come across the border into the United States from there. What's happening now because we've had so much illegal immigration that they've set up, these cells have got people in our country, they set up primarily in our Midwest and the interior of our country and they're starting to process and make fentanyl right here in the United States and bringing the precursors through there. Cartels like to use juveniles, little consequences for juveniles and because the risk and reward pays off for them and I told you about them already kidnapping people and putting them into servitude. So here's what it boils down to, folks. We have this region down here of California where there's a lot of illegal immigration going on. They are, there are illegal immigrants being shipped right here into Shasta County. Whether you want to believe it or not, it's happening. And sooner or later, those, the impacts on Shasta County, we're going to realize. You all elected me to take care and protect the lives, property, and rights of people of Shasta County and I am trying to do that and this is going to be a hurdle for everybody. I'm telling you right now because I work with the FBI, I work with federal agents, every one of them will tell you, the threat to America is greater today than it was right before 9/11 and it is because of our open border policy. We have to address it. We have to look out for it. We have to look out for our resources. Now, I want to make something else clear. I, again, I told you at the front of this presentation, I'm talking about illegal immigration, not legal immigration. And here's my disclaimer for you to know that I'm serious. My wife is an immigrant. She came to this country and her family came to this country through the legal process. They had to learn about the history of our country, they had to understand our country, they had to swear allegiance to our country, and they became a legal citizen of this country. I got no problem with any race, any nationality, any immigrant coming into our country and our state if they're coming through the legal process. When we're allowing these people to come in clearly, untruly documented and knowing what's going on and we're giving away our country, it's going to have consequences sooner or later. So I don't like the fact that California, this is a personal thing, I don't like the fact that California passed Senate Bill 54 and doesn't allow me to investigate illegal immigrants just on being illegal immigrants, which I don't, but it's in place and we're feeling some of the effects of it. So what I would ask is this board consider, if we get an illegal immigrant and they're here and outside of emergency situations when they need help, they need resources, they need to be taken care of, fine, we need to be humanitarians and do our diligence there. But if they're just coming here to take and wanting handouts in our resources, I don't think that we should be delegating those resources for those purposes. So back to my wife and being a legal immigrant. Here's how, here's how it goes and I've met several like her, well, I married her obviously, but I've met several like her and when we fly our flags, one from her birth country and the United States flag at my house, the United States flag always gets flown higher, always. She's the first one to make sure of it. She's, because she cares about this country, she came in this country and she's grateful for this country. There's plenty of people out there, plenty of people that have migrated to the United States and to California that are just like that. Not so sure all of these ones are. So I'm trying to look out for the safety of our county and bigger the safety of our state. That's about all I've got. I'll take any questions.
Sheriff, thank you so much. Before I get to our, a couple of speakers, I know we talked about this, my wife is a first-generation-born citizen, her family's all from Norway, so really appreciate that. Supervisor Kelstrom.
Yeah, I was, well, I was just going to say, I'm the drug smuggler because I'm going to Public Works luncheon. I get it now. I'm just kidding. On a serious note, a friend of mine was pulled off of an OES training, you may be aware of this, by the FBI who wanted him to work on an anti-terrorist task force that they were doing down there. And they had notified him that there was 4,800 terrorists, known terrorists, that they knew about that were now currently in our country that had crossed through that border and those are the ones that they are aware of. And the only reason I mention now, I won't go into details, are you familiar with the...
I am.
Yeah, okay. So 4,800 known terrorists that they know for a fact came in here, came into our country, are in here now throughout the country and my understanding is there, those terrorists are now working with the cartel. They've teamed up together and the cartel is supplying them with weapons.
And Supervisor, just for clarification for everybody else, they didn't let them in knowing they were terrorists. They've made that connection since under investigation and connected them to the terrorism and to cartels. So it's not like they knowingly let them in like that, but the fact is, that's how they're getting them in. People that don't have records, that don't have history, they get them in through the open border and then they set up their cell.
And thank you, Sheriff. That was a great presentation.
Supervisor Jones.
Thank you, Chair. And Sheriff, on April 13th, we witnessed a bus come into Redding at Save Mart. Individuals got off that and scattered. What, is this what you're talking about? Is this what you're seeing?
I don't know definitively yet, Supervisor. I'm looking into that to figure that out. And when I say I'm looking into that, I'm not contacting the immigrants themselves. I'm just trying to figure out the transportation route and possibly an NGO that maybe sponsor them. It appears that's what it is, but I don't know for, I don't know for sure yet.
I mean, we interviewed one of the individuals, the only one that was left. He said he was from Mexico. The bus that came in said it was a limousine and it was, or its origins was from Mexico. So it seems like this is the thing that you're talking about. Now, of these individuals, we don't know who they are, only knew this one because it was the only one that we could, we could talk to in Spanish.
Did he say what country he's from?
He said Mexico.
Okay.
But the other, but that may not...
The other three were from Guatemala.
Yeah, they meant that may not be true. I didn't think, he didn't look Mexican to me, but, and I did, and I did look at him and so, but you know, I have no idea really, if they're honest or not, I have no idea, right? All I know is that a lot of people are getting off a bus, they don't speak English, they look, they're moving quickly and they're looking confused. Obviously, they know they're not supposed to be here and that's, that's what I saw firsthand in a limited, in a limited manner.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. So before we take public comment, in the period, in the period that Sheriff Johnson and I were working on this and I had asked him about the likelihood or, because he had made, you'd made the statement, it's not a matter of if, it's when, but in this county of Siskiyou to our north, they had an accident where there were seven, I believe it was 17 individuals in a cargo van that rolled over, one was killed and that was, those were all immigrants. And then as we've been working on this, the PIO... And then as we've been working on this, the PIO of the county as well as the Sheriff's Office, and thank you for them that did, worked on the resolution, of course, this bus then came in. And again, you can see the videos online, there were no women, there were no children, it was all men and you could watch that video. So with that, Sheriff, are you going to stick around at all for public comment?
I've got to, I've got the next presentation too.
Oh, okay. Buckle up, we have some public comment. And I will say this too, one more time before everybody gets their three minutes and I do have quite a stack of them. Again, I just want to reiterate, I think the most compassionate thing we can do is get people to an area where there are resources to help them because there may be individuals, probably many, getting off this bus that we just saw about three weeks ago and there are zero resources available for those people because I can tell you in Mercy Canyon, there is people that still need help and some of those people graduated from Shasta High School in the 80s. So there is no resources available. So it's not about not compassion, it's about making sure people have the resources they need and they're not here in Shasta County.